Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
Call this meeting, special meeting of the Wyndham Northeast Unified Elementary School District, to order. First item is adjustments to the agenda. And the thing I would like to do is change slightly the text of 4-1 to approve the warning for the approved warning and cut the part that says for town meeting because there will not be a town meeting. This is going to be a ballot vote. And if there's no objection to that, are there any other adjustments that need to be done? Hearing none. We'll move on to item number three, communications and public comment. Do we have members of the public that wish to comment? Not, not hearing any. We'll move on to the next item, which is the, the warning. Nicole, I believe you're on this somewhere. There you are. Nicole, I believe you're on this. Were you able to pull up the, the warning from last year? And if not, can somebody help me figure out how to pull up my version of it? Because I've got it on my screen here.
I sent something to Lynn, so I'll forward that to you, Jack, to see if it's what you're looking for.
All right. Who said that? Is that Nicole just spoke? All right. Nicole, where did you say you sent that?
I sent it to Lynn, but I'll forward it to you now.
All right. All right. The question is, Lynn, if you've got it, oh, there it is. That is exactly, let's see if it's different. No, that's exactly the language that I've got on my screen. So great. Um, now, what we need to do tonight, folks, is we need to generate something equivalent to this. And the way I would do it is I would leave the top the same and change it as follows. The legal voters of the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District, consisting of the towns of Westminster, Raffin, Grafton, are hereby warned to vote at their town meeting and at their town meeting in the designated locations or the locations designated by their, I've got this right here, by their town clerk on town meeting day, which is March 2, 2021, to act on the following articles. So far so good. Article one, to elect by ballot the following members of the district from among its qualified voters to serve a one-year term. Leaving the rest of that empty. Moderator, clerk, treasurer. Article two, since we've lost the case, is not what we need. So we move on to a new article two, which is old article three. Shall the assembled, shall the voters, get rid of the word assembled, of the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District appropriate the sum of, and these are the new numbers, from, from Flora. And Flora, challenge me if I've screwed this up because it's sure possible. Six million, nine hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars, which is the amount that the board has determined to be necessary for the ensuing year. It is estimated that this budget, this proposed budget, if approved, will result in education spending of nineteen thousand, two hundred and ten dollars per equalized pupil under the current state formula for calculating this figure. Now, Flora, is that still the number we think it is? Is this nineteen-two-ten?
Yes, it is till now, yes. So it could, I don't think it could be lower, but I will have to wait until the auditors will give us maybe final draft so that number can change. But if we get any final draft from the auditor.
You'll have to do that. Sorry. Well, too many machines in here. Go ahead. I'm sorry. What was that again?
So right now with the information that we have any finance and general entries, you know, according to the surplus amounts that is showing, that's the number that we have. Now, I emailed Miranda, the auditor, this morning, you know, to see when she could have dress for us for the Union Elementary. So if the draft shows that you guys have an increase in that surplus amount, which right now we calculated around two hundred and seventy-five thousand, if it goes up, then the number that you have right now will definitely go down.
All right. Well, nineteen-two-ten is a change from eighteen-seven-thirty-four, around four hundred and, oh, four hundred and eighty dollars or so. So that's not an unreasonable estimate, since we know that the per pupil, per equalized pupil number has both changed and has been some iterative changes in the formula calculation this year. You'll be surprised to learn that elementary school students are no longer a full, a full equalized pupil. So goes it with the state. So that, so anyway, shall the assembled voters of Wyndham Northeast Elementary School District appropriate the amount of six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, six hundred and eighty, or excuse me, six million, nine hundred and fifty-four thousand, six million, nine hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars, which is the amount the board has determined to be necessary for the ensuing year. It is estimated that this proposed budget, if approved, will result in education spending of nineteen thousand, two hundred and ten dollars and fifty-eight cents per equalized pupil under the current state formula for calculating this figure. We're not doing any article four. We're not doing any article five equivalent. We're moving on to, to, I guess this is article three now. Shall the voters of Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District authorize that district through its board to borrow funds as needed, consistent with the budget as approved, on the credit of the district for its current expenses in anticipation of tax revenues and receipt of money due from state aid and other sources? The next article would be kind of, the notwithstanding stuff doesn't work anymore because we've lost. So it'll show, shall simply be, shall the voters of the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District nominate and elect board members according to the interim articles agreement to serve for the terms stated? Get rid of all the rest of that language. Reserved for the residents of Athens to be elected at large by the district. One member for a two-year term. And every two years and, and for every two years thereafter. Reserved for residents of Westminster to be elected at large by the district. One member for a two-year term and for every two years thereafter. One member for two years, a reserve for residents of Grafton to be elected at large by the district. One member for a two-year term and for every two years thereafter. You may ask why the modifications to this? Because we are holding these elections on town meeting day in March, which we hopefully will do from now on. When we created these articles, we did it in April, not realizing that that was going to be a bit of a problem. And we ended up having the elections in June. When the, when the lawyers quit laughing, they said they'd get back to us for clarifying language and didn't. So the result is we're just going to eliminate this and worry about it later. So that's, that's my elegant solution. Now, the, the next article is, shall the districts vote to set annual compensation for and pay its officers and board members for their terms of service? Now, you'll recall, we decided to go without any money last year. This is an item we ought to probably talk about because we, at some point, need to set compensation levels for people that succeed us. And then the final, shall the, actually, we can't do an article nine because we have no way of doing an article nine. There's no way to conduct a, a transact any non-binding business via Australian ballot. So that's it. Any questions, comments, funny jokes, anything we, anyone would like to add to this? I see Lynn, I could. Lynn, go ahead.
Jack, this is, this is Cheryl. I've got some, but I don't know if somebody else came up first.
She did. Lynn Morgan came up first. Sorry. Lynn, I'm going to ask you to go ahead. And you need to turn your mic on.
There we go. For the, the members that up on article seven, so those of us that were voted in two years last year are filling out, finishing out our term, correct?
Okay. Correct. This is only for the people, for the one-years. Cheryl is a one-year person. I'm a one-year person, and I believe Charles was a one-year person.
Right.
So those are the slots we're talking about.
Okay.
And Cheryl, you were the next person I saw whose hand it was up. Go ahead.
Thank you. And so building on what Lynn just asked, that allows for us to continue a rotation so that we've got some board members leaving in a year and some board members leaving in two years. So that makes sense to me, Jack, that you've created this, this language to serve that purpose. My other question right now, and Flora, you can help with this. I think we're getting really close to the penalty on the per pupil cost. So how close are we with nineteen thousand, two hundred and ten? Maybe Lynn knows that.
I'm not sure about penalties. I apologize.
Well, there's a, there's a threshold we don't want to exceed. And, and Jack, are you, are you on top of that right now?
On top of it is a broad phrase here, but I, but I, but I do believe I saw a point-nine-something percent, nine-one-nine, no, it was higher than that. It was like close to nine-eight. And I did see in that spreadsheet that we circled around, Flora circled to me, and I think, if I was smart, I gave to all of you, that there were places where it said, and you'll see it on that spreadsheet, Flora, where it had like a one-point-oh-two in some towns. That's basically saying you're over the threshold. And I believe we were not.
We were not, we were not before, but will this number put us over now is my question?
This was the equalized pupil count and calculation that I pulled these numbers from and checked in with Flora today. So this was a Brad James spreadsheet, the one that we, the first one earlier this morning, Flora. And it had, that's the one that I, has the, had, had the rather remarkably, I thought, remarkably inaccurate, but apparently accurate, you know, populate, the equalized pupil calculation that we looked at this morning. And there isn't, somewhere on either the east or west side of column W, a number that you'll see in some places where it says like one-point-oh-two or point-nine-nine. And that is, I believe, the threshold over which, you know, we have a problem. And I don't believe we were in that list. If we are, we might have a, we might have to go revisit the, the budget, but bless us, let us know.
If, if Flora, I'm looking in my email. I, I thought I had it, but I'm not sure. But if Flora has that per pupil for the WNEUSD.
Yeah.
We can screen share and she can put it up and we can point to it and see what it is. What it is, is that in order to ensure that all, you know, public schools across the state are within the same range of pupil spending, so, you know, more affluent communities don't get away with spending a lot more than what we get, you know, with other communities. There's a threshold. And if you go over it, you have to pay the state more than.
As I looked at it, Lynn, and I'll get right to you, Melissa, I promise. As I looked at it, I didn't see that number, the, the nineteen-two-ten-fifty-eight was a number that we worked out mathematically from the data. It wasn't a number that Brad generated. And I'd asked Flora if Brad would be so kind as to actually have it. Last I knew he didn't. Melissa, I'm going to go to you next. I'm sorry for the delay.
You're good. I'm just curious, if Westminster withdraws, does that change the equalized pupil rate? And should we be giving those numbers as well to make sure that we don't have any dilemmas come up when things change?
Yeah.
If things change?
I, we don't technically have an ability to, to say that the number is a state number, and the state number is an official number. In the report that I, the draft report that I sent around to all of you earlier today of the difference between the two was that the Grafton would pay basically a hundred and fifty-three dollars more per equalized pupil. And it was like a thirty, I forget the number now, thirty dollars less for the, for Westminster. Then on, you know, on nineteen thousand, two hundred and ten, it's not a big item, but that was, that, that was the, that was my work in the spreadsheet. It's fairly hard today, and I'm kind of confident that's the bottom line number. So there you go for whatever that's worth. You know, as I said in my note to, in my narrative, you know, a past performance is no indication of future, oh my God, in terms of how this will actually shake out with all the business with one-seventy-three and everything else. But that's quite, oh, look at this. What do we got here? Who, who owns this tax count sheet?
That was, yeah. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes? No? Okay. So that was the sheet that Brad James sent me to utilize to calculate it, and that's what I use with Jack. So if we put here, I'm sorry.
I had two hundred, two thousand and ten-fifty-eight. So he's got nineteen ninety-five? Then we'll need to change that.
So, no. So, um.
Can you make it bigger? Because I can't read what the screen share is saying.
Take your two fingers, Flora, and why, you know, spread them apart.
Spread that. Or what, I don't know what you're using for.
Yeah, there she's got it down below.
All right.
Does that work?
Yeah. Now, you just changed the number on me.
No, no. So this is the thing. So I do have, we do have what we approved for the budget, which is this amount here, right? For offsetting revenue, that's the amount that we are not one-hundred percent sure yet how much we have until we get it from the auditors. So going most likely by the amount that we have right now in E-Finance, that's what we put in there. And then it gave us the amount that I have given Jack, but I will have to rerun the report.
Yeah. Hold on just a sec. I looked at the language really carefully, and it says, which we estimate will be. So it is not a guarantee. You can put, if you, you, if this is your current best number, then let's put in that equalized per pupil count at your now best estimate number. You know, this is again, this is the best we can do. It is not a guarantee, and it says so right in the language, and says so right in the language for the last three years. So if you think.
He has his notes down here, you know, what each thing, you know, meant, and how did he get it? So that's what I got from him as a help, you know, so we could do calculations. And, you know, if we needed like the taxes and everything according to the CLA for each of the towns, but that's something that Jack said, we'll get into it later on. But this is provided for us from the state. This is what he used for FY twenty-one, but he said it's the same calculation. As long as we put current numbers, we could use it like FY thirty if we need to.
All right. Well, here's the thing. Then let us change the, the nineteen-two-one-nine-fifty-eight to nineteen-one-nine-one-thirty. And again, this is an estimate based on our best calculation, come from Flora, and we get to hang her outside the doorway if it's wrong, no pressure, and it'll all be good. So what do you say with that? Is that, you okay with that, Flora?
Yes. Remember as well that I emailed Brad this morning so he could review our equalized pupil numbers, because the number he has is three forty-nine-ten. So we are going with the number he's given us. But when we make calculation, as well as the numbers that Chris has shared with us in the newsletter, it is definitely low. So we had around two hundred and fifty-one students. But if I put here on my equalized pupil that we have two hundred and fifty-one students, that's how much it will go up.
Well, we have, there, there's calculation for special ed, there's a calculation for free and reduced lunch, there's all sorts of other fun and games. And depending on, you know, when I crunch the numbers, I either get three forty-nine-oh-one or three seventy-five-eighty. And if he wants to use three forty-nine-one-oh, I'm perfectly happy with it. Let's go with his number.
Yeah. So, but I, but he as well said it was preliminary, not final, but he has corrected the sheet two times already on us. So we'll see why he comes back again. But since we need to have at least something there, that's why I just use whatever he gave us.
Hey, guys, this is more detail than you'll get on any other school board. And I either want to pat myself on the back or apologize depending on what's appropriate here.
So I found last year's numbers on the state website, and the threshold last year was seventeen thousand, nine hundred and five dollars. And it kind of concerns me because I don't think the state thresholds would go up a thousand dollars per equalized pupil in one year. That's the FY twenty-one.
Well, this, yeah. Jess, this is a really good point, you see, because we calculated last year when we did this. And let me pull it back up. That per the number that we had, we were showing an equalized education spending of eighteen-seven-thirty-four. But we did not, when they finally sugared it all up, go over the threshold. So I, I see what you're talking about. I saw it too, and it confused me. But this is why this whole, the, the state formula, the, the phrase, it is estimated, is really important here because the bottom line is, as Brad has said, he has no real idea until the formula is finalized and the legislature is dithered with it every single year after, after these warnings and after budgets are approved. So it gets really hard to.
And the auditor's draft as well, we have to take into consideration, once we get those auditor's draft that give us our balance sheets and it'll let us know how much we have as, as revenue, that could update and change.
Well, we're looking at basically a two percent-ish bump this year and from last year. We were under the threshold last year, that two percent-ish bump. The, this new number, this nineteen-one-ninety-one-thirty is roughly what we would expect to see if we had a two percent bump and roughly the same amount of students. So it feels not ridiculous to me. That's, you know, obviously, you know, people may vote the budget down just because they don't like the fact we're still unified, for all I know. But that's, that's what we're working off of. Any other questions, exclamations of deep discomfort?
Well, this is Cheryl. I mean, I think what you just described, Jack, sounds reasonable. And I do remember again, last year, that we were not over the threshold, even though the number that we came in at is higher than what Jess had just, just cited. And again, this is estimated, as you said, and there would be ways for us if we be, as a, as a district, as schools, to work with the budget if we needed to, if we felt that we had to make some major adjustments in the face of penalties, I think. So, so, so I think based on this being kind of within the realm of reasonable, this makes sense. And so thank you for, thank you for all of the detail. I mean, actually, I really appreciate it.
I do know that in my conversation, if you have one, with the state, with the AOE from last, this is from last year, when, when Phil Scott wanted everybody to retroactively claw back the budgets and cut some money, that they're saying that we could, we could do that. So if Flora finds out that we're over the, the dollar amount, I'm prepared to rewarn a budget, rewarn this and pull it back for a recision vote, God help us. But, you know, and I, just as a fair warning, you know, if, if we get a big surprise, I'm going to do that, but I don't expect that's going to be an issue. Yeah, Flora, go ahead.
Yeah. So I suppose today we submitted allowable tuition to the state that is due tomorrow. So we, we could go as well with what the state is going to review and approve for us. And it has these same numbers.
All right. And, and I would say that since we do not absolutely screaming have to have this number in, this, we're doing this tonight, made mostly to make Kim record and my friends at the, the town courts in our three towns happy. But if this blows up between now and the twenty-first, you might get a phone call about a very fast meeting, but I'm not expecting it to. So there you are. Any other questions, anybody? All right. I guess then I'm going to look, and I apologize for not having texts on this. A motion to approve the warning as described. And I will send it all to you just in case there was a, once Nicole and I have confirmed that we get all our language nailed down, but I think you've all heard it. And Nicole, you're taking copious notes, right?
Yes.
You poor thing. All right.
Long day she's had, yeah.
And we do have this as a, a video record, so if there's any question. So I'm, I'm looking for a motion to approve the warning as described. So anybody, I see Cheryl Charles. Can I get a second just because it's money? I see Lynn Morgan. Any further, any further discussion? I will call the question. All in favor, say aye. Raise your hand, actually. Raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay. We have unanimous on that. Okay, I got, we have unanimous on that. Thanks. Now, one more thing. There is for the, there are two towns that have, and it's actually on behalf of the district. We have to have language on a, a separate ballot item. It's not part of this warning, but also it will require a warning and signatures. And that is for the towns to conditionally approve the, the petition, the approved petition of Westminster. And I've got the language and I even sent it around and I'll be darned if I can find it. Hold on just a second. Let's see if we can do that. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Where, where, where is that? I've got too, speaking of too many screens, you talk among yourselves while I go see if I can figure out where the heck I put it. Add this up earlier. Are you? Here we are. Okay. The language to be put on the fall, we will need a separate warning item for each town. For the town of Grafton. And this, shall the voters of the town of Grafton approve and ratify the withdrawal of the town of Westminster from the Wyndham Northeast Elementary Union School District, subject to the certification of Westminster's January 5, 2020 vote to withdraw. Second one, for Athens, shall the voters of the town of Athens approve and ratify the withdrawal of the town of Westminster from the Wyndham Northeast Elementary Union School District, subject to the certification of Westminster's January 5, 2020 vote to withdraw. Actually, this was my language, but Pietro liked it. So we need to approve these as separate warning items for the two towns. So I will need, Lynn, perhaps you would like to, you would like to move that we, that we submit for the voters of the town of Athens, the appropriate language? I just, excellent. We will need a vote on this. Is, is there any, is there any, is there any discussion? Then all in favor, I gotta go find my screen that has a sign. I don't know where you are.
I will say aye because I have no video on.
Well, I, I can't even see you if you did. Oh, here we go. Found you. 20 screens. Okay. So that's unanimous. Good. So for the town of, for the town of Grafton, you heard the language there. Jessa, I'm looking for a, for a motion to approve that language.
So moved.
All right. All in favor, raise your hand, say aye. Okay. That's unanimous as well. So those are the items before us this evening. Is there any other stuff before the, before that I've forgotten? Because I can't find my agenda anymore because I've got too many screens. Then I guess we, I will, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Lynn, just as a FYI, tomorrow at some point or the next day or so, we will want to send out copies of these warnings and have everybody e-sign them. So be prepared to see that in your folder.
Yeah, we'll take care of it.
All right. Well, and if you don't, you'll hear from me. Actually now, and you'll also hear from our designated clerk, because this is an official document. And we have confirmed that Lynn will very quietly yell at you all. So that the, all right, very good. Thank you all. And I appreciate eating up 40 minutes of your time tonight.